...for last year.
Well, let's take some time, one call to meeting the order. And Shad can lead us in prayer.
It's all about praise. Father, we thank you and know that it is your goodness. And Father, we want to stop for a minute and recognize you before we go with all that we have, what you have given us. Lord, for that, we want to glorify you. We want to thank you for all of our blessings and all the good things that you've done for us. Well, as we go into this meeting, we realize, Father, we don't know what tomorrow holds. We don't know what next week holds, and that's a month for next year, but God, you do. Lord, I pray that you guide the hearts and what you guide the minds of the mayor and council and the members of the city of coming here. Lord, I pray that everything will be done according to what I will. Lord, for the good of the citizens of coming and of South County. Lord, we thank you, God, again, for all the blessings. Thank you for allowing us to get in your safety, Lord, and having to relieve. We pray, God, that you allow us to go home safely. Lord, all these things we ask in the name of Jesus, and Lord, we do love you. Amen.
Amen.
Anyone want to join some place to pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no changes to be intended. I have a motion to adopt. Please vote. Carries five votes. Next is to consider for adoption the following meeting minutes of the special call meeting July 22nd, 2019. I have a motion. Please vote. Carries five votes. Item six, there is none. Item seven, old business. A, planning and zoning, the rezoning application, 2018, 310, for Limwood Properties.
Mayor, members of the council, this item's rezoning, as you know, has been heard before. A public hearing was held on June 18th. We're here tonight to take action on the item. Before we do that, I'd like to read the updated staff report in the record. An application has been submitted on behalf of the property owner to rezone 22.38 acres, more or less, from highway business to planned unit development at 1600 Ronald Reagan Boulevard. The proposed development, according to Exhibit A, rezoning plan will consist of 336 multifamily residential units, one eight-story hotel totaling 300 rooms, to be completed in two phases, and 10,000 square feet of commercial space to be constructed at a future time. The public hearing, as I said, was held on June 18th. And the rezoning has been postponed twice until the zoning conditions have been finalized. The applicant has submitted a new zoning stipulation letter dated July 24th containing 16 conditions to which the city and developer have both agreed, including a condition that the developer agrees to pay impact fees in the amount of $1,250,819 at the time of obtaining the land disturbance permit for parcel B, which is the hotel parcel, which shall be before any certificates of occupancy issued for any of the multifamily development. Developer agrees the impact fees will be credited towards the future vertical hotel construction of a 300-room hotel described in subsection N. And the developer agrees that if additional impact fees are required for the hotel used being constructed, the developer shall pay additional impact fees at the time of obtaining a building permit for the hotel. Developer further agrees that the impact fee deposit can only be credited towards future building construction of a 300-room hotel when it is constructed. And developer is waiving any and all rights of an impact fee refund, reimbursement, reduction, or credit, except as may be specifically described. The recommendation is approval of the PUD rezoning request according to the conditions A through P of the above referenced letter. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Didn't we ask for a letter?
Yeah, so we've got that letter. And then we went further in that. Because the concern was that we would never get the hotel. So the developers agreed, he's got to pay the impact fees for the hotel for $1,250,819 before he can get any COs on any units.
And you.
And that whole thing.
That will not be refundable. It'll only be applied towards a hotel.
And if the hotel's not built, then.
Nor should that part is still. That's the part still. Any more questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to announce that the people in power for potential conflict.
Second. Please vote. Carries four votes. Thank you.
Got to be quick. Yes.
Next is item eight for new business, planning and zoning, number one, alcohol license for Tokyo Steak and Sushi.
Good evening. We received, the cities received, an alcoholic beverage license application for the sale of distilled spirits, small beverage, and wine for consumption on the premises at the new restaurant, Tokyo Steak and Sushi, located in Tri-County Plaza. The licensed applicant has met all the requirements of the application process, paid all the fees, and no issues with the background check. We have a representative of the restaurant here tonight, should anybody have any questions.
Did you do a background check, check on him?
He's not the applicant. We're lucky, he's not the applicant, so.
Yeah, I'm sure we would find nothing there, but.
Yeah, no, there was no issues in it. And they, his brother, Mr. Lynn's brother is the one that is the actual applicant. They were pretty quick, got all their stuff together rather quickly and stuff on the application process. So there's nothing that would prevent us from issuing it.
I was able to attend the soft opening. It's good. I suggest everybody give it a shot.
It is very, very good and a good family run. And so we're happy to have him in the city. Do I have a motion to approve? Please vote. Carries five votes. Uh, next is item two, G C I C ordinance information only.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance that the Georgia Crime Information Center is asking us to take a look at, to put some standards in place when it comes to running criminal background checks on things, just like what we talked about with Tokyo Steak and Sushi. It's one of the requirements. This has to be approved by the G B I, it's from the G C I C, the G B I, or the F B I for continued use of the Georgia Crime Information Center and the FBI fingerprint database. This is just for informational purposes only tonight. We've actually sent this to the Georgia Crime Information Center. I'm also working with Code of Fortune officer, Matt Sally, to discuss it with him as well. He talked today and has some info on me in terms of what they require. Just informational purposes only tonight. We can look at it for the next meeting.
Is it something new that we weren't doing, or everybody else?
This is something that's across the board.
Something new there.
It's something that is, I don't want to say that it's new, it's something that a lot of other agencies are doing. They've never come to us and said, this is time for you to do this or not. And so now they got around to us and said, we're moving forward to adopt these things now. It's not something dealing with, for example, if you have some traffic ticket or you need to pick up a, you know, you're arresting someone. This is simply when you're running background checks and fingerprints for these licensing purposes and what you can do with it and that sort of thing.
Is it a lot different from what we currently have in place?
Language, different.
Language, more than anything.
It's language apparently for the specific categories, for vape shops, alcohol licenses, massage parlors.
So do we only do it for the types of uses that we specifically require fingerprints for? We couldn't fingerprint, for example, lawyers.
You could.
I'm just making sure. I got to mark three.
Just dancing lawyers.
No, just, Lord, yes, fingerprint those guys. That's all it is, up until now.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I'd make a motion to approve.
No, where is information? So next is item three, conditional use permit, 2019, 341, for Sonny Mountain Motors.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item will require a public hearing, but before we open for public hearing, I'd like to read the staff report in the record. Property owner's made application to proper authorities for a conditional use permit to allow an automobile sales establishment at 328 Delonica Street. Property is on highway business, is currently vacant, but has been location on automobile sales establishment in the past. The automobile sales are permitted use by right in the highway business zoning district. Per the attached plan in your packet, the business will park approximately 28 vehicles on site for sale. Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 16th, and when no one in opposition unanimously recommended approval of the cup with the following two conditions. Number one, a loading-unloading zone, a minimum of 14 feet wide and 40 foot long must be provided. It must be remaining continuously free of vehicles and accessible directly from the street. And condition number two, this cup is specific for this applicant, for this business, which this applicant currently holds a license. Only the applicant operating the current business may utilize this property for this use. I'll be happy to answer any questions before we open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Please vote. Carries five votes. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this conditional use permit? Or a motion to close the public hearing? Please vote. Carries five votes. Discussion?
Only thing I'll say is I know when you instituted an ordinance to see about producer, but Mr. Watson has had this for many years. And I, in the business, have taken something away from somebody that's been doing something for so long, even though technically lasts. I think the good thing that came out of this is that we've got a plan on file, decal is unloading zone and stuff like that, so I have no issues.
So this, I would discuss this forward. So this isn't currently being used since a lot of our now.
Got office somewhere.
But it has.
Okay, it has.
Question, 507.
It has, just to go over and explain. Yeah, so if you. The way that you can, if you can take, if you run a continuous business and your business license stay current, your grandfather didn't even change. Technically, they didn't continue the business license for, over the time for a grandfather. So that's why they have to.
Right, now, I didn't say that. So they've been operating in another location?
It has, but while he's been operating and his property's getting taken from all the way, he's actually been paying and leasing his space for hosts to come in the.
I'll make a motion and we'll approve the conditional use. For me. Please vote. Carries five votes. Next is item B, administration, impact fee ordinance amendment definitions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is nothing more than a very short amendment to the impact fee ordinance. This is not, this is not something that has to comply with all of the previous regulations regarding the impact fee ordinance adoption process, because this is not imposing any impact fees. It's simply amending a definition. And what it's doing is it's amending the definition of public safety facility to include and be expanded, to include police and our law enforcement services purposes and protection, which is something that was dealt with in our capital improvement element that we passed back when we did the impact fee ordinance. Literally, if you read that definition of public safety facilities, that is the only thing that this ordinance does, is to define public safety facilities that way. So we can use it for many of those purposes.
So what are some of the things that you could use that affect the fire protection?
Well, if the, currently, we do not have a fire department. But I would imagine that if you needed to, for example, capital improvement could be one of our element items would go around and replace all of the fire. I can certainly see it being used for the. That's what I asked you, yeah. That's not in our capital improvement element currently, but it certainly could be something that we'll do during the future. And if you want to get the fire truck out, you could do that as well.
Is this collecting the county's fire impact fees? Or is this just saying, well, our public safety fees?
On the opposite, we do not, to collect county impact fees, requiring I G A for South County. That's not something we have at this time.
Any questions or discussion for Kevin? One more time to read through this. Need to change that. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment that's proposed in our book. Please vote. Carries five votes. Next is number two, small cell technology ordinance information only.
This is a breadth of large ordinance, Mr. Mayor. And the General Assembly this past year passed the Georgia Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antennas Act. And this is one of those things we knew was coming. And what the state has done is the state has come in, the state has told local government how to regulate these small cell antennas that can be placed upon light poles and on billboards and those sorts of things. We have this ordinance that is based upon the model ordinance that was produced by the Georgia Municipal Association for all the cities in the state to consider. And what this does, this is, this really is just for your informational purposes only. We've got a little bit of time before we adopt this. But what we have done is we have allowed the city to regulate it as much as state law allows. There is an application process for new poles. There is an application process for co-location. We are collecting the maximum amount we can for licensing fees on an annual basis. And that's the gist of it. We're doing what we can at this point under state law. There are a lot of state law references in here. And certainly, if any of you have any questions about those state law references, while I don't have that digital code with me right now, I can pull it for you and explain it to you again, or mildly.
So that deal we went through a few years ago, they're still going to pay us, so.
So, yes, that, we still. It was some group that had an arrangement on Verizon.
Mobileite.
They, our agreement with them stays in effect throughout the term of that agreement. That's something that state law provided, that if you have a current agreement with someone, we can move to this if this is more favorable, but it also stays in effect through the term of that agreement. Once that agreement expires, then we bring them in under this process.
We don't get any money off that.
I thought it was longer than that.
We do get money off of this one.
Yes, we get. I don't recall exactly what it is.
The one that we did a couple of years ago was.
It's $500 per year.
I think it's 500 per installation, ain't it?
Per year. You still get licensing fees and all that.
It's less than what I remember with the Mobileite deal.
I don't remember. I know we asked for that one.
Only to say they, I feel like 1,200 or something.
I don't know if they ever got that, that high.
My question too is, is this, Scott mentioned something, this might be in the yard utility. So would the fees obtained be in the enterprise utility?
No, no, this is the rideaway ordinance. It's dealing with utilities in the rideaway, but these are general parking fees.
How many do they, do you know how many they, the state might be in a city?
I don't know.
Is this, is this 5G?
Small cell, yeah, small cell, and it's a boost, like a 5G. What I understand about it.
Because my G is small.
They have about a 500-foot, yeah, they have about a 500-foot range. And they talk to the big towers.
And we're getting so much per little booster.
Yes, per installation, yes, ma'am.
And it's 500 a year per installation.
I think that's what it is.
That's a lot of money.
No, it's per year. It's an annual licensing fee.
So 500.
It's 500.
What I understand is their biggest range.
I'd have to look it up.
We've got about five.
We have about five so far.
About five is one at the South County High School, and one across from the Dairy Queen. So if you want to see one, that's at the corner of the road up there, Triple Gap.
You've already got five?
About five.
They're not particularly intrusive either.
I think it is 500.
We have stuff in that area too, about how they had to be on existing, like we didn't want them putting up their own poles in the rideaway and stuff like that.
So.
It was more if they put a pole up. If they did a pole, it was a lot more.
And that's going to be the same thing now.
Yeah.
That doesn't change.
Why did the state decide to put that up?
Because somebody lobbied them to. I mean, it's an issue of, I mean, from their side of it, it's an issue of being consistent, municipality, municipality, and having a set of regulations that everybody plays in.
Well, it sounds like we did pretty good. Go ahead and finish that.
Yeah. We saw they didn't come out any worse.
So I'd like to read that a little bit.
So what's the thing? Moving on, number three, procurement policy revisions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is just a slight revision to the current procurement policy. The legislature, state legislature, just updated the minimum requirements for what types of bids or what types of projects and contracts must be bid in the Georgia Procurement Registry. So we have just updated, done some small updates, basically. If you look at page five, section two, that's where the biggest change is. For purchases up to $25,000, there's no change in the current policy. Over $25,000, that's where the change occurs. The city has an internal requirement that above $25,000, you traditionally, historically, require three bids. The state level for requiring bids is now $100,000. So you'll see section two, paragraph one and two, that's the internal requirement. Section three and, or paragraph three and four, that just restates the state requirements now under the legislature. I think today, you could either go ahead and vote to pass this as is, or if you wanted to just adopt the state requirements for the $100,000 mark, we could amend this pretty easily and make it uniform. You would have to, you know, for anything over $25,000, you could possibly just suggest that bids be put out, but not require it. $100,000, that's the statutory limit. Anything over $100,000 has to be bid out. Yes?
On the part six, disposition of property, why do you dispose of property when you're not required to put it in the paper and notice that it's protected?
What page are you on?
Pick in a big thing, part six. You can dispose of any real property unless the council has declared such a real property to be surplus. And then surplus is sold by pocket sale, field bidding, spot bidding, options, or any other means that you want to bid. Why, why is this stuff not, is it so, such a small amount? Is that why it's not advertised?
So this, the disposition of property, that is, I believe that this is just what we've had in the past, and it's governed by OCGA 36-9-3. We did not make any changes to this based on our previous policy and what you see today. So that's what the city has done, but I think it's, I think it's set forth in the statute that's listed there. But it's something we can check on, Kevin.
And in terms of just generally, you wouldn't. Certainly, that was the council, but a lot of times, we have computers, was probably the easiest thing to talk about, where we had just a ton of computers and, you know, putting them in the paper or anything like that is a lot easier than just to sell them through. There's a.
Govdeals is the website, and we do any, you know, surplus weed eaters, lawn mowers.
So that is not a lot of money.
No, no, it's not. When they've gone well past their lifespan, instead of just throwing it in a dumpster, you put it on Govdeals. And our junk is sometimes other people's treasure, to put it mildly. You'd be amazed at what an old weed eater, a steel weed eater that we have wore completely out, people will pay for.
Like if you needed a weed eater, you couldn't say, Phil, let me give you 20 bucks for that old weed eater.
Exactly.
You'd have to buy it on Govdeals.
Okay. That's enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Phil, you want to weigh in on this ordinance or any ideas?
I like the ordinance in the aspect of, we were really handcuffed by the Georgia Procurement Registry limits, and that changed with this. Before, we were having to, anything we bought over $10,000, we had to put on the procurement registry. To give you an example, Fairgrounds recently had to quote, had to get bids on T-shirts for the North Side T-shirt night, the T-shirts that we give them for their sponsorship. Usually, it's about 17, 18,000 dollars worth of T-shirts. We had 27 bids come in on that. It took an hour just to open the bids on it, and all of them were within, I mean, just dollars of each other. That's just a small example. I mean, there's others too. And we have to bid out things a lot of times that, that we know there's only going to be one bidder on. Specialty items, things that, you know, we can't get three bids on. We have to go through the process of this and put it on that procurement registry and let it run for three weeks. It just slows, it just really slows down business, the ability.
So what does this do?
This raises it to 25,000. Well, no, actually, it raises it to 100,000, which mirrors the state requirement.
The big change is what has to go in Georgia Procurement Registry. You know, $100,000 always been the public works level, where you have to go out and get competitive bids. The key is, is what, when do you have to go through the Georgia Procurement Registry policy?
I mean, we still go out and get quotes.
You still get bids. It's just a matter of going through the website, putting it on the procurement registry is where the difference is. You're still getting bids, you're just not.
And the administrative side of it, too.
You still get bids. You said you got 27 bids on the same bunch of T-shirts. Why wouldn't you still get 27 bids?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't go after 27 bids. We'd go after three to five bids. And then another thing this has caused is it's almost created another job for a person here of keeping up with this. Allison, that works in accounting, it's took up a great deal of her time having to monitor the requirements for the procurement registry. Well, we, yeah, we still will for anything over $100,000, but that's a lot less frequent, yeah.
So Phil, in this version, we do have anything over $25,000 going on the Georgia Procurement Registry, which we can amend and take that part out and have that only apply to the $100,000 mark.
We don't have anything right now that's up for that, no.
So the question is, do you want to put it at 25,000 and a dollar that goes on the registry or?
I see, man. Isn't that what the state does?
That's, that's the state limit, yes.
I think so. It just makes the whole process a whole lot less cumbersome. I mean, we still keep a file on all these purchases with those quotes in it, so, yeah.
Is that what this said, I mean?
How long does it have to stay on the registry, like, once the process?
That, well.
Is it three weeks?
It's the same as it has been in the past. It's based on the city's ordinances.
Yeah, it's, then it's four weeks. Yeah.
So if you had, let's say Shad needed a certain software, and you only get it from this one company, you got to wait four weeks, you got to put it on this registry, even though you know you can only get it from one supplier, you know, one company, you got to put it on there and wait four weeks to get it.
If it's over $100,000, you should have it.
Right, but if it's under $100,000 now, then you. But if it's under a hundred now, then you, you don't have to.
Already had to. I still make the motion to change the first hundred thousand.
Yes, you still get bids, so it's not, it's not like you're handing stuff out and looking to bids. Ready, Molly?
I'm ready.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance with the following amendment. Begin strike, section two, paragraph one, starting at, and posting on the Georgia procurement registry. Strike that after the sentence. Section two, paragraph one. I'm sorry. It's part two, section two.
I'm sorry.
Part two, section two. Paragraph one. Striking part of the first sentence and posting on the Georgia procurement registry. That's the motion.
Please vote. Carrie's five vote. Still getting three quotes and all that good stuff. Item C, Fairgrounds, request for change of order, Fairgrounds wall extension.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the purpose of this item is to request that you consider the approval of the attached change order that's in your packet on the Fairgrounds Bridge project. The reason we're asking for this is to extend the wall on the Fairgrounds side to bring it up to grade. This will result in increased usable space for use in events. It's going to increase the usable space by about five thousand square feet, so it's a pretty good area. It'll also include additional paving and with increased drainage work. The total price for this change order is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents from Vertical Earth, who's the contractor working there.
Tell me what, where this. What will be their total bid at that time?
Yeah.
Hang on a minute, what, who was first? What will be their total bid? I'd have to look it up, Louis, I didn't bring their initial bid in with me, but it was one point, seven cents.
We were about seven hundred thousand below what the first bid was, when we rebid it out.
Yeah.
And this is, the change is gaining a big area. When you come off the ticket booth, it's tying to what used to be the old handicap lot.
Well, is it still, is it still under the?
Extend that wall through here.
It's still the lowest bid, that's fine, but usually.
Or which change of order could you have over?
No, we already bid all that out for sake, about seven hundred thousand below what, you know, we first bid it out.
Yeah.
And this is, and just looking at it out there on site with Vertical Earth and where the wall would have came in, and where we could move it to, and how much more usable space that we're going to gain, really going to work. I mean, it's, it makes it a lot bigger. And we'll maybe add, I think, it'd be a good place where a pavilion, park benches, you know, sitting right there off of, you know, kind of talking about moving. Some of the heritage village stuff and consolidating over there, making like a little city, you know, kind of incorporates all that, and it'd be a good place to sit. That's what I'm working on. I'll make a motion that we issue the change order, approve it.
I'll second it, I want to ask a question before. Didn't we get impact fees for this project, or no, it's lost?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's lost seven.
Please, please vote. Carrie's five vote.
I'll tell you more about it. I got, I got to go again.
Number two, request for approval, construction of this new ticket booth.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, again, at the Fairgrounds, this item is to approve the construction of a new ticket booth at Gate C at the coming Fairgrounds. This was originally part of the bid for the Fairgrounds improvements that was put before you in January of this year. If you recall, those bids were rejected at that time as we felt the cost to construct the ticket booth was much too high. We did talk about at that time doing the ticket booth ourself to save money, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you got some information on the total price of the ticket booth down there that, that was bid out at the time and.
The original quote that we had for the ticket booth was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. We're going to be able to build, I believe, for under a hundred thousand, the same thing, save over two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And while we don't know what the exact number is, because we're getting quotes for each individual trade, you know, as we go along, I don't foresee it going over a hundred thousand dollars. So we just need approval. I make a motion that we approve the request for the construction of new ticket booth.
Please vote. Carrie's five vote. Next is I'll need to report on quotes for body and car cameras.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this item is to report the bid that we received on body and car cameras for our police department after consulting with Chief Marsh on the necessity for, for these items for safety reasons for the officers as well as liability. We have two quotes, one, one for body cameras and one for car cameras, and this, this is an example of what we were talking about in the procurement policy that we had to wait for a sole source quote on, or we would have brought this earlier. First, the body cameras, we have the quote from Axon. This is the, the camera that they demoed, they liked the performance of it. The quote on the body cameras is eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and zero cents, and this was budgeted for in the two thousand nineteen budget.
Do we need another bid? Just, just this one thing?
It was a sole source. It was, there wasn't another company to get a bid from on this one, yeah.
That's the manufacturer. They tested out multiple different ones and figured out which ones was going to work the best. So therefore then you say, well, we want to go with this, or it's like saying you. That other IP that owes us money, they don't sell these to them.
No. No.
So this was in the budget that we, that we saw and we knew what we were going to do.
Yeah, we, we.
So it's not, again, making another.
No, we did budget for this last year, in this year's budget.
Chief, does anything?
That's a good product, I think you got to like them, help yourself tremendously. Put on the keep-on-site servers, they hold their stuff in cloud storage, secure, super easy access, there's nothing on the downside.
Your opinion, does it need them?
Yes, sir.
And what do you say to get them?
Please.
This is the car, the first one's a body.
How many is this worth?
Um, it is for thirteen, or no, excuse me, it's for sixteen, it's for sixteen cameras.
They're having a motion to postpone since he would have said good.
To answer your question, Councilman Evans, it's for everybody if we're full staff plus a spare.
Well, hold on, there's two, we got, they split the quote up into.
The, the car cameras also from Axon, exact same procedure here. It was twenty-five thousand dollars, six hundred, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
But that's something we catch up to, right?
My understanding, none of them work now.
No, they do not.
So what's the lifespan on these, are they going to be every, maintenance every year, you think, or? So in that procedural quote, they'll actually replace them after three years, no cost, so that's part of the contract as well.
We'll, we'll have to pay this on an annual basis, but it's a good budget for each year. We'll have to pay that in front.
They'll have to replace it often, there's standing this out of vehicles.
Yeah. No, I didn't say that, I'm only concerning myself with this first year, and then we'll put this in the budget for next year. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the highlighted, it's the highlighted total out here is what I just read out to you.
So you're on the title, it had a year time.
And then the chief.
Right, right, but, but it's not, we don't have, like, we don't like it in year two, three, we can cancel.
Yeah, that's a requirement, that's a Georgia requirement.
And, and the chief will have to, he'll have to budget each year for them to, to like, start out.
So one year's eighteen, six, sixty-four. Car's twenty-five, six, sixty-nine.
Probably some installations. So we need two motions.
Okay, I make a motion that we do the body cameras, eighteen thousand, six, sixty-four.
Please vote. Carrie's five vote.
Okay, then I make a motion that we do the car cameras, from Axon, twenty-five thousand, six, six, nine, sixty-four.